Council meeting, Councilwoman Cobb is working, they're working on her, something for her, but stand by. Councilmember Board is on Zoom. Is he up, Mr. Kegel?
I don't believe he's up yet, but he is in route. So he's going to be on Zoom until he gets here. We're getting, we're getting him set up.
All right. So that the record show that Councilmember Solomon could not be here due to an emergency that must, had to be taken care of today. And the record showed that, have you heard from Mayor Protem? That Mayor Protem Gonzalez is absent. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the agenda.
Councilmember Alvarez?
Mayor, I'll second that motion.
Is Councilmember Board up on Zoom? No? All right. All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries seven, four to zero. We will start with our citizen comments on agenda items. Residents, you have four minutes to speak on agenda item. Counsel, you have one minute if you would like to make a statement. We will call up Sean Price. Good afternoon, Mr. Price. You have four minutes.
So I rise and, and to discuss and make my statements is to DS 24-051. In other words, this proposal to add the designing and building of a new city hall project at approximately 100 and anywhere between 1, 1.2 to 1.5 billion dollars. I understand that just to design this is going to cost around $724,096. And in that design, I'm just kind of curious that if we're going to put this in there, right, will there be offices, you, individual offices built in for city council? Or will it be one room for the city council to have as an office? And not only that, the city offices, like the city manager's office and/or the human resource office or any of this, will they be accessible to the public? Will that design be integrated into the draw? I, I do think that, that some of the spending proposals underneath this plan, which are not described in today's meeting agenda on the website, there is nothing there other than that you're, you're going to discuss this item. No details, no information, no, no information provided as to what it's in lieu to. So that's a little disappointing is that the transparency for this, for this discussion is not open to the public on the website. That's just my opinion because there's nothing described there, just that you are going to talk about it today in, in the statement. As to, as to all of this that's going to be discussed, my concerns are to the property tax increase that this will bring about in, in such as that our debt service. How much will our debt service increase if we do the 1.2 to 1.5 billion dollar addition to the 25 budget to build a new city hall complex, right? Which I think is a security threat to the general public for concentrated attack from crazies and wackos. We seem to be, we, we seem to get those in this area for some reason. So I'm just, I'm looking at as to why we didn't have an open discussion or transparency on the website. And if that, anything is concerned in the design of this facility, will it be accessible to the public? Because if we're paying for it, we should have access, general access to everybody in that building. Every office, every individual, every employee. We should have access to discuss with them, talk with them and share our concerns with what's going on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Melissa Brown, good afternoon.
Based on the motion of direction that called this meeting to happen, this is so that council members can put pencil to paper to give the consultant an idea of what the council members are looking for, if I remember correctly. Where in that did it say, ask the citizens if they want a new city hall? And if they do, what do they want to see there? Because the two primary things that the citizens will use most often, the police and utility collections, are not included in this new complex. The citizens don't visit HR, the citizens don't go to printing, the citizens don't go to accounting or finance. And let's face it, with the three o'clock meetings, most citizens aren't going to be coming to the meetings. So why exactly are we saying that this is for the benefit of all of the citizens? We can go there and go to court. We can go just as easily a couple of blocks down and go to court where it already exists. Talked to a lot of citizens and, you know, they do not want this. I understand that, I think the speaker before me was slightly mistaken. I understand this is not a 1.5 billion dollar project, but this is close to 150 million dollar project, the way that it was presented. We can take 150 million dollars in debt to build a city hall. We can take 150 million dollars in debt and finish Featherline. We can finish Chaparral. We won't have to wait for funding. We need to see where the priorities are from this council and a brand new city hall is just not it. I've talked to very few, if any, citizens who have said, yeah, we want a city hall. No, they said, why would we do that when we have roads that are falling apart that we can't drive on? We have sidewalks that we can't walk on? We have areas that are dark in the city where there's no lights and it's unsafe. We've had a couple major incidents where people were just trying to cross the street or get off a bus and they were hit by vehicles and died. But the priority from the council is a brand new 150 million dollar city hall. That's not representing the citizens. When we had the one town hall about the bond, the few citizens who were able to make it out here, the majority of them were against it. The mayor spoke in her personal capacity, not in her official, in order to support the idea of the bond in the city hall and actually adding two additional projects. But the vast majority of the citizens who spoke, who are not on the council or don't have any ties to the council, were against this. Who are you representing? Oh, I'm sorry, I still have time. Also, I will say that nothing has been decided yet. This is not on the ballot. And every time you have a, a new change, you ask for new designs, you ask the consultant to come in and do something new, that's costing us money. So we're putting a whole bunch of money into this upfront with no guarantees it's going to happen and no guarantees that the citizens are going to approve it. How far in debt are we willing to go to give this consultant money for something that the public doesn't want? Thank you.
Michael, for Nino. Good afternoon, sir. You have four minutes. Oh, I apologize. Councilwoman Cobb, did you want to say something? I see your name here. Okay. Yes, ma'am. Sir, I apologize. Once again, good afternoon. You have four minutes.
I have some time to think about this. This is nothing but a golden calf, this whole project. Let's be honest. You're a bunch of kids looking at the JCPenney Christmas catalog fantasizing about the toys that you hope mom and dad are going to buy for you. Well, the majority of people who are asked about it, whether it's the Colleen Daily Herald and probably the only honest thing in there, in my opinion, is the poll that's just a direct question. My reading of it, 75% of the people asked or submitted don't want this. Let me ask you honestly, in the last few weeks, how many hundreds, that's more than 100, of the citizens of Colleen have you been at their doorstep and getting their thoughts? I dare say in the last four to five weeks, I've been at more houses and talked to more citizens in this city than you have combined all year. I learned a lot by talking to people and getting their sense of it. We do not need this. There's the argument from Mr. Kegel, the building's old and it's broken down. Well, they said the same thing about the White House in the late 40s and they spent the money on that. There's a lot of talk about the historic downtown. Well, is this not historic downtown? The White House is old, Capitol Building is old. The oldest buildings still in continuous use on the East Coast happens to be the ROTC Building on Howard University, which is their ROTC headquarters. The city hall of Rome, Italy, has been in continuous use since about 300 AD. It used to be the city archives. They turned a closet into their city hall and it's a showpiece of downtown. So this needless expenditure, and I can answer the one gentleman's question, will there be offices? Well, there better damn, damn well better not be because you're not entitled to offices by city charter, including the one that you currently usurp across the hall, Madam Mayor. You're not entitled. There's no faith that you would even be in them answering the phones. You don't answer your city phones now. You don't answer your emails now. So how is a new city hall going to do any of that? A city hall should be a reflection of the status and success of a city. You've all gone to Grand Prairie and Points, North, South, and East and West. And of all those places you've gone, what's the one thing that they have that we do not? A diverse and thriving economy that does not rely on building single-family homes on every square inch of grass in this town. The people that I have talked to in some of the more upscale neighborhoods here, I'll be specific, off a bunny trail, they're getting burned out on the commute to Austin. Whatever benefit they thought they were going to be getting by having a nice paycheck, the daily commute is grinding them down. There's no place, they would prefer to work here. Say, we're such the big dogs, we should have the companies. That chemical company out on the east side of town, great, it employs 12 people. It's ridiculous. We are a suburb with no city, no industry, no vision, no future. Two airports, an interstate, and a railway running right through the middle of town. We have no commerce. We have no manufacturing to speak of. It's a farce. This is a vanity project. I don't care what the city manager says, that I don't have the fancy degrees. I know people, I know basic dollars and cents. I may not be able to break it down to the molecular level like some people in this room can, but in the general concept, this is not needed. It is a wastelist, it is a wasteful expenditure of funds that we don't need to. We don't want it and good luck trying to get people to pay for it because I and a few other people in this room tonight will spend the better part of the year because you're going to put it on the May ballot in hopes of the low voter turnout that you're not going to get, you're not going to get it past us.
Thank you. Councilmember Alvarez?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, citizens, for your thoughtful opinions on, on this matter. We talk about things that are not needed. There's a lot of things in this city that are not needed to perform the function of a city. Libraries, parks, cemeteries. We don't need any of those to perform the essential functions of a city. There's lots of cities that don't have a cemetery, that don't have libraries. So, you know, if that's the thought process, I would, I would bet my, if I was a betting man, I'd, I'd bet on the, the folks in the room who have signed the front of a check before, if I'm taking business advice. That being said, I think everybody in this room, I've said this before, whether you're for it or against it, should be excited to see this go to a ballot and let the people decide. If you truly think that everybody is opposed to it, what's the harm in having it go on a ballot? I mean, it, it would turn out in your favor, I would think, if you're so confident that people are against it.
You can request from the council an additional minute.
Can I get one more minute?
Council, Mayor Protem, you have one minute to you. Yes.
Thank you. You know, we talk about people's will here all the time and representing the people. I've yet to see one person come up here who is the official spokesperson for 160,000 people here in the city of Colleen. I know I'm not, nobody up here is, so who is the official spokesperson for everybody here in the city? There's not one singular person. So when we get up here and we talk about us and we, but you're standing up here alone, who is the us and we? You should be saying I and me. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarez. Sandra Blankenship, good afternoon. You have four minutes.
Madam Mayor, city council members. I have been in this town for almost 30 years. I was here when they converted this and made this upgraded into the city council. I'm constantly reminded of a phrase from England. It's penny wise, pound foolish. I believe that investing in our community is the way to go. And once we invest in our community, then other things will follow. People will be very joyful to come downtown and partake in what we have available downtown. So I am, I am advocating that we do have a new city council, or city hall. And it might not be as, need to be as big, but we, I think that it is needed because this is an elderly building. It was the original schoolhouse from over 100 years ago. And it is not functional and is going to cost more to repair than it is to actually put in a new, a new city hall. As I said, investment is needed by us. This is our home. And in, with our home, we need upgrades. We need to protect our home. We need to invest in our home. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from council? Councilmember Segarra?
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate everybody that gave comments. I took some good notes here. But somebody had mentioned that the city hall is not for the citizens. What HR doesn't have anything to do with the citizens, but I think everything that the staff here has to do with the citizens. Those are support services. So whether they have, or citizens get to see direct, you know, directly meet with the people or not, everything, everybody here are here for the citizens. And HR has a tremendous role to play for our citizens in every office that's in there. I, as a council member, I don't need an office in there. I don't think that's necessary. But our staff that does the things that all our citizens require do in order to better and more efficiently provide that support that all of our citizens need. So I think it's, I'm not.
Sir, your time is up. Would you like to ask the council for an additional minute?
Sure.
Yes, sir. You may continue.
And, and then lastly, you know, the comment about fixing, because somebody mentioned about old city halls, those older city halls, you know, whether they were built in 300, they've cost millions and millions over the years. I can bet that 300 years ago, there was no electricity or air conditioner in that city hall, 300 AD, whatever that is. So that's the decision, that we spend the money to refurbish this, fix it up, fix the third floor as old buildings do require, or do we rebuild from the ground up? And so those, those are the things that we got to look at. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for that. Thank you all, residents, for giving your input on citizen comments. And council, Madam Secretary, discussion item?
DS 24-051. Discuss and consider proposed 2025 bond projects, including the city hall project.
Thank you. Counsel, as you know, Mr. Kegel will be presenting this to us. The request came from Councilwoman Cobb. I don't know who seconded that, to bring all the five designs back to us. And this is not the first time that the designs have been discussed in this chamber by our consultant. So it's not the first time. And just for the record, there is nowhere in the charter that a council member cannot have an office in a city hall. We have already done the research on that. Also, I just want to make a note that throughout the city, throughout the USA, there's always some concerns, whether it's your infrastructure, whether it's a building, it could be your water, it could be anything. You're going to always have some concerns in a city. But it does not stop progress. It did not stop us from going downtown Colleen and revitalizing it. It did not stop us from finding ways to make our city better with the overlay, the $10 maintenance fee. It doesn't stop progress. A city hall will be decided one way or the other by the people. We, we're quick to run to the charter to defend an argument. And nine times out of 10, what most people quote from the charter is not correct. So I can take anything, a law or anything, and put it in my favor until you really actually do the research. So the residents that are listening, the residents that are new here, do your research. It is your vote that will decide if this city will have a new city hall. Mr. Kegel, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll have the presentation coming up here in just a second. So what we have, I've got loaded up the first presentation, city hall, that had a number of options. The second presentation that you saw that, that had some detailed cost and some conceptual drawings. And then Mr. Denny Bowles is here from BSW Architects to get involved in the conversation. By the way, we, we have issued no debt to pay him and don't plan on it. So the, I wanted to give you some background first to understand where we're, where we're going on this and put it, the new numbers that were received at the last meeting to put them in some context because it does, it does change some things and it'll require us to make some decisions. So let me start by a slide with just one number on it. If you remember, we had an amount that we thought was pretty much the maximum we should issue in the near-term timeframe and maintain our AA bond rating. Our bond advisor has told us if we go too much past this, we possibly could endanger our AA bond rating, whether that would drop it to a AA minus or an A plus, I don't know. But it's just getting, and that's kind of the territory that we would need to stay in. And then obviously, also on this, there are tax rate implications, the, the higher you go with the number. So keep this number in mind. And then I'm going to go back over a couple of slides that you have seen previously that we, we started with. We had two groups of projects, general obligation bonds and certificates of obligation. The difference being that general obligation bonds are those that require a public vote. And so what you see here are three projects. And if you see those three projects based on some estimates from a couple of years ago and not based on detailed information, all three of those add up to less than what the new city hall is projected to cost us. So you can see that will present a bit of a problem. And we go to the next slide. This once again was, these are the COs. We talked about new park development, Mohawk Drive, some fire station, new build, rebuild, and expansions for another $86 million. So those, those two pages of projects added up to about 192 million. And we said that would cost about 11.73 cents on the tax rate. Now remember, that's not just the debt service. Some of these things, when you build new parks, if you build a new station, you got to staff it. They've got M and O costs. So that's why on, on the middle, you see the estimated INS, that's interest in sinking or that's your debt payment. And then M and O, that's maintenance and operations. So between those two pages, it's 11.73 cents and about 192 million. Now, if you do the math, it comes up to more than 11.73 cents if this was in isolation. And let me jump forward a little bit to a slide to explain that, and then I will come back. So, you know, we issue debt in 20-year increments. We don't issue debt longer than that. Sometimes we issue debt shorter. One example, when we bought a number of fire apparatus, we did seven-year debt on those. But this is our, if you, if you never issue another dime of debt, this is our debt service schedule out to 2043, and then in 2044, it would be zero. So we had talked about four different debt issues. You don't issue this all at once because there's no way you could spend 192 million dollars. And you, you issue it in smaller amounts and we, I'll go back to that in a minute and show you it was over four years. But what you do in that, you layer that debt in there because you've got debt that's being paid off. So if this was all zero, we had no debt and this was the first debt we were ever issuing, it would cost more. And I'll tell you how to get there in just a second if you want that number as well. So this was the original thought. We'd have a bond issue in '25, '27, '30, and '33. And we'd also showed you another graph, how that all fit in to that debt service schedule. And with the debt falling off, the debt adding on, the additional debt, it was about 11.73 cents over time. So now we get to this issue. And I've thrown one new one in there just for instance, so you could look at it. But if city hall is 151 million dollars, we have all these other projects. We know that our rec center and our library were, are probably about as underestimated as the city hall. We've seen projects, if you want a rec center with a competition pool in it, you want a real rec center, it's probably about 70 million. That's what we've seen a couple of communities pay for that had a competition pool inside and the rest, everything else that goes along with the rec center. And the library, that might be a little much because you've got a little more latitude in building the library, but you add all those up, we're at about 295 million. That doesn't really fit. The reason I threw a couple of numbers out there for roads because that's what everyone's talking about, but when people say you shouldn't do anything because our roads are crumbling, that's our existing roads and we have a plan to do that and we have funding to do that. And as you've noticed recently, most of the complaints we're getting are about fixing, the roads are being fixed, they're under construction, and it's very inconvenient. You can't have both. So we do have a plan for that. But what we didn't have is money for new roads. So there's some money for Mohawk, but I'll go down to Featherline. And you have to remember, if we fund this, if we had a debt issue next year, we're not going to solve the problem. The problem is at the intersection with Chaparral. And we can build more lanes on Featherline, it doesn't, it doesn't solve the problem. Our main issue in the city of Colleen is not too few lanes, it's too few intersections that are fully built out. That's where all the problems are. Building more lanes does not solve the problem. It would ease it a little bit getting in and out of the, of the neighborhood, but that's about it. We already have a plan in place, we already have the engineering started to put a temporary right turn lane on Featherline at Chaparral. Just put this out there for instance. So I thought before we spent a lot of time working on... out there for instance. So I thought before we spent a lot of time working on changing the design of City Hall, making it larger, smaller, whatever it was going to be, that you needed to have this background information with some new project costs. And my advice on City Hall would, in this one, if you want to continue forward and get everything down to, back to $192 million, you're cutting it by more than half. And at that point, I don't know that it makes sense to do it because we're not solving the problems. We're not solving all the problems we set out to solve. This is a lot to take in. And then the other thought as well, do you want to issue more debt? Well, that's, that's more on the tax rate. And I don't think we can get there to fund all of these at $295 million. And I think the problem we're facing is a lot of projects that have built up over time and never been funded. And now we try to tackle all these problems at once. It's a lot to take on. Then, as I said, Mr. Bowles is here with VSW Architects. But I just want to remind you that one of the reasons they were hired is they worked with all of our department heads extensively to find out their needs, not only today, but into the future, and built those into the, into the City Hall design. So I think the real issue would be, do you want to look at taking some of those departments out of the City Hall? That's the real way to reduce the size of City Hall. And then it depends on who you're taking out. It brings up a lot of, a lot of different questions. So what I thought I might do now is entertain any questions or discussion, and then we can load up the City Hall presentation and reminds you what the departments that are in there, and see where that discussion might go.
Thank you. I do have a letter from Councilmember, oh, we have, I will speak after the both of you. Councilmember Boyd, let the record show, he is here.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor, and apologize for getting here a little late. Mr. Cagle, if you don't mind, in about 30 seconds, can you give me a brief of what I need to know?
Yes, sir. And this was a very brief presentation. And the issue is, with a new price on City Hall at about $155 million, let me go to, I'll go back to this slide. That crowds things out. We had estimated that the max that we could issue over the next several years was about $192 million, based on two things, based on maintaining our bond rating and just the ability to fund it. And so with the new prices added in, we're about $100 million over that. So the question becomes, what are the priorities? And how do we arrange this? Yes, you could probably have a little bit of latitude on increasing that $192 million, but not a, not a whole lot.
Understood. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Did you want him to go back over what he discussed, or just an overview?
No, this is just fine. I got it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Segarra?
Thank you. And I appreciate what you said because you said, this is a result of accumulation over the years. And we always talk about that, you know, the hardest thing, being a council member leader, is maintaining growth, you know, keeping up with growth. And it's easy, and I've been part of it for a long time. And I know that it's easy just to come up here and say, we're not going to do anything. And citizens are okay with that. You know, there's not a lot of backlash when we just don't vote on anything, when we say we're not going to spend any money. We don't receive any type of backlash. But when we have to try to maintain growth and spend money, you know, what the biggest concern for our citizens is our tax dollars and how much it's going to cost and all that. And I know that when we did the maintenance fee, the road maintenance fee, that was about a 10-year thing that it took just to get to the $10. And now, you know, we're catching up, we're playing catch-up. And it's probably one of the best things this council has done. I've said that in the past. But it's something that needed to be done over the years. And I think that this is something that we're just gonna have to see, like you said, priorities, see which one is priority. But, you know, the question that I have here real quick is, I think that I hear a lot of comments from citizens between safety and, you know, when vehicles get backed up. And when we talk about safety, especially when it comes to our kids, and then we say, you know, it took me 20, 30 minutes to get from point A to point B. I look at it as, you know, wouldn't it be better if you're not driving so fast so that, you know, you don't run over your kids and all that, especially in areas that don't have sidewalks? So I think that, you know, safety and, and there's a, and I've mentioned this before, there's a safe city, and they rate the safest cities in the country. And the number one safest cities for pedestrian, by all means, is New York City. And it's because you can't move. And so you can walk in New York City and never have to worry about getting run over by a car. And it's just mind-boggling how we want to open up the roads, but we talk about safety. And I think those are two different things. And we see it on Tremere, you know, we've had accidents there with the high schoolers with that open road and stuff like that. So I just wanted to point that out, that we just gotta kind of figure out, you know, what is the big concern? What is the number one priority? Safety? Or, you know, having cars get from one point to another faster? So, thank you.
Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Using a doctrinal term, we're in somewhat of a pickle, Mr. Cagle, to go from an estimated cost of $66 billion to about $152 million, I think it was. The pickle is that, you know, when you look, we talked to the other cities who have had some positive economic growth after they built a new City Hall, which I think the City Hall is a multiplier. Comparing those, if we waited, I mean, if we waited, that $152 would probably go up to about $200 million, correct?
Well, the longer you wait, the higher it's gonna go. And it's not just this, you can say for all those projects.
Right. And I know we're addressing some of those projects, and we can't, we can't bank on the federal government giving us the grant money because we're competing with other cities in Texas and at the federal level. My, I guess my, I will state that whatever City Hall we build, we do need to have all the city. And that's where the other part of the pickle is. It's, we need to make sure it is a central place where citizens can come to do business. And, but that 292 total projects is, is, and that doesn't even include any other current debt that we have.
Well, the 192 million, that's all new debt.
That's new debt.
Yes, sir. And the chart I showed you was the annual debt service on all of our outstanding debt.
And that's what brought it up to 200 something million.
Yeah, that's, I guess, I would have to say it's been issued over the past 20 years.
Okay. And is any of that coming off, you would say, I know, I'm trying to remember on the budget, that some, I know we're getting some relief from some things that are being paid for, but not enough to, is there enough to even, that will help us?
Well, it does help. But the next three years, it's pretty, if you remember from that chart, it was fairly level, the debt service for the next three years. And then it starts to drop off a little bit. And then further in the future, you've got some big, some bigger chunks that drop off that are paid for.
Okay. Thanks, I hope.
Could we maybe load that up and go back, I'll go back to that presentation and bring that, bring that chart back up. And I think it's a false choice to say that the choice is between a City Hall and Chaparral.
Right.
I don't believe we want our taxpayers to spend $100 million on a road that's primarily in the county when the federal government, the state, and the county would help pay for it otherwise. That doesn't make any sense.
Correct. And I know the long-term project costs are basically covered by the grant money that we're receiving from the federal government, well, the three entities are receiving from the federal government and the state. We just have to wait our turn, unfortunately.
Councilmember Adams, this project has been going on for a while. It's not, it just didn't start when that school got built. So if it's something that people don't like, people will focus on that. But they know that we've been working on this for a while, and we know the concerns. So it just didn't start because a new school was built.
Yeah. And I, when I first came on council a couple of years ago, I had looked into that, and I discovered that it was discussed in the past. It's just the issue has been where Colleen plays in the priority of the people that give us the money to pay for it.
Correct.
Mr. Cagle?
So you do see in the first, any drop-off of any kind, you see in our debt service is 2028, and then you've got one in 2030 and '33, some pretty big drops.
Okay.
And we were taking that into account with this debt service schedule of an issue in '25, '27, '30, and '33. If you want to just figure out, if you want to ignore our existing debt service and how it drops off in the future, a few things to keep in mind. If we did a $10 million debt issue at 4.5% interest, we'll probably beat that, but let's err on the side of caution. And that's 20-year debt. That's about $768,000 annual debt service payments. So you can kind of figure out, knowing that right now, this works now pretty easily because one penny on the tax rate generates about $1 million. So you can work in multiples.
And that's the other end of this, like, eight-legged pickle, I think, is you're trying to figure out how we pay off the other pieces and do all the other things. Because I don't consider the City Hall as the priority. It's just one of the multiple priorities, and that's a growing pain. As we get bigger, we're gonna have 100 priorities that we have to decide what to do. You know, right now, with the size we are, we're now starting to experience what it's like to be a bigger city than what we were 10 years ago. And we just got the dubious task as a council now to deal with that. But thank you. I may have a question later.
Yes, sir.
I do have a question for you, Councilmember Adams. I'm gonna make sure I heard you correctly. You stated that the City Hall was not a top priority. Did you make that statement?
No, it wasn't the only priority.
Oh.
I think it was mentioned that we were saying that this is the priority, but it's not the priority.
There are, correct, sir. There are many priorities. But I wanna, I cannot stress this enough. No matter what this council decides, if you put it on the ballot a lot, it is not the council that will make the decision to build a City Hall. It will be the individuals that take the time to go out and vote yea or nay. So don't, council, take this as if you're trying to push this on them, because they will have the final decision. It's not our final decision. Madam Secretary, Mr. Cagle, the guest speaker?
Well, I think, first of all, it depends on where the council wants to go with this. Do you want to go back over the original presentation with the, with the multiple options? So could we load that first City Hall presentation up? And I guess, Mr. Bowles, if you don't mind?
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Boyd, I just saw you popped up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask if we can go to the previous presentation before we move on to this one.
Oh, you, you want the first presentation back up?
Yes, sir.
Okay. There we go.
If we can go to the third slide. Okay. Let's go ahead into the fourth slide. And I'm happy to do this because I don't, I don't have this in front of me. Okay, next slide, please. There we go. So our cap would be $192 million. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And a 2025 bond issue would include what we see here, these proposed projects?
Well, as it, this was from a previous presentation. But yes, sir, this is the way, this is the way it stood at the time.
Okay. And that was at the former pricing?
Yes, sir.
Got it. Okay. So this isn't too relevant to an extent. Okay, next slide. Okay. So if we prioritized, if we made the top priority City Hall at $151 million, with the cap of $192, that leaves about $41 million left to fit in other priorities. The council would essentially be choosing from this list. Is that correct?
Well, yes. And I mean, if there's something else that comes up, that's, that's up to the council. But this is what we know of right now.
Understood. Okay. Okay. I mean, I'll give my comments on this, and they will remain the same. I do believe one of the top priorities, one of the yearning priorities is the City Hall, and getting all the departments in one place at one time. And I'll reiterate that it's important. We do this right the first time around, so that we're not coming back, trying to, spending money on future design, land cost construction, and all that others, all the other things that are associated with it. I would recommend the council, you know, after determining to make that a priority, to look at these other projects and see what we can benefit, the city would benefit most from, should the voters decide to approve it. We know park development is important. Perhaps the library might be able to wait. But I do think the council should really look at that and see what else we could, could fit in there to get this done right the first time. In other words, meeting the needs that do exist with this opportunity that we have before us. And I do like the points that are reiterated, that this needs to go to the voters. Let them make the decision, not five or six people who just perhaps think that they speak for the city. That's not the case. We speak for our citizens. And we give them this opportunity. We can give them this opportunity to see what they would like to see built in the city, to move it forward and keep us on track for the future. Those are all the comments I got. Thank you.
Councilmember Alvarez?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Cagle, for what you presented so far. Just thinking out loud, I know, thinking back to, Colleen Independent School District did a bond initiative some time ago. And on the ballot, they had two different options. So I don't know if that's an option for us to consider, maybe taking the voters two separate options, and they can vote for either one that they like, or none, or both, or I don't know if that's, you know, if we were to package some of these projects differently, and then see which ones the voters believe they rather see.
Councilmember Alvarez, I just want some clarification, please. With the two options, will the City Hall be in both?
I mean, I guess that's what we would have to discuss and figure out. If we would put it in both, if it's in one, or if you package it and say, okay, well, this one's a City Hall and a rec center, this one is rec center, library, road project, or whatever the, however the funding works out to make it equal the, around or less than $192.
Council, Mr. Cagle?
Yes, ma'am. So these are, would be the three projects that would be on an election, and they would have to be standalone propositions. They each stand on its own, unless, unless we had something where the rec center and the library were in the same facility, and then it would, that would, so I guess essentially, we'd either have two or three propositions on a ballot.
Councilmember Boyd?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's important that we, in my opinion, package this to ensure the city's needs are being met. I understand there's the option to break it into pieces, but I don't know how wise it is understanding the need for the City Hall to give an opportunity to fail. It's most of the time more palatable when citizens understand that a relevant city need is met, as well as another need is met within the community, that being a park, a recreation center, a library, or something like that. So my recommendation would be to keep this packaged as much as possible.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Adams?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. And I think I talked to Mr. Cagle about this. If there's a way, I don't, I don't foresee a recreation center in a City Hall together, or a library in a City Hall together. But if there's a way, as we make that the new standard, because that's not going to be the only recreation center we're going to need in the future either, or a library, if we start looking at, and I'm not saying that's what we need to do now, or as we go forward, combining, possibly combining the library and the rec center. Because they kind of, the services almost are related for who they, who they reach out to. So that will save a cost. And when we get to the reach out to. So that will save a cost. And when we get to the design part about it, we can figure out how to merge that together. Thanks.
That is an excellent point. Mr. Cagle?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to, let me bounce back to our forward. You see one project on here called Veterans Park at about $10 million. Well, part of that's already in the city hall presentation that you saw. There was a lot of green space there. So that wasn't incorporated into that plan specifically. That would, that would, when, if this were to pass, and we start planning it, Veterans Park, I think would be folded into that. But the simplest options that we have right now on city hall to reduce some costs, not significant, but are you going to do all surface parking and remove the parking garages? That involves a little bit of property purchase that we think is going to be available. So there's a little bit of trade-off there, but it's still, the surface parking would probably be cheaper. But in order to fund all this, these other things, city hall would have to be reduced significantly. It'd have to be a lot more than just the parking garages. But that, when we pull up that other presentation, we can see some costs for parking garages.
Councilwoman Cobb?
The reason I asked for this meeting, because there had to be an explanation. Some of the things that you all have said was not understood through just looking at those charts, how we're working on it, what we're doing, what we want. There's just a widespread of information that I heard just sitting here in the last 20 minutes of what was needed, how come we didn't do this. Sometimes it's not so much of how much of what's on the screen, it's the understanding of it all. And when you see that you're working for my best means and efforts, then guess what? I can see it. I know why. I know why my taxes. I know why my money. I know if I want this. I've heard a lot about now, some of the things that were going on. I didn't understand why, or how, or how do we package, or what's important, why is it important? That's important. That's important. And I think in order to sell this and to let our constituents, as well as the community know, there's got to be an understanding. There's got to be an understanding why the library, why, why, why. You know, that's something that my children used to say all the time, why, why, why. Well, that's what your constituency, that's what our constituents are saying to us, why, why, who, what, why. You get to understand why the package is the number, and why we're pushing for that bond, whether it's needed or not in our books. It could be not needed in someone else's book. And you don't want to lose a whole bond or a whole amount of work because you didn't understand. And it's important, just so important. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Councilmember Boyd?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm looking at this slide with the totaling 295 million. And these are indeed, each and every one of them, needs in our community. And it's evident to everyone that the city hall will absorb the vast majority of that potential funding there. And these are the situations that city councils find themselves in, trying to meet the demands with the funding that's available. I'm always want to try to find out how to make these things possible. And I added up the costs outside of city hall, and it came up to 186 million. And we already know we have a cap of 192. I don't have a solution here, but it's just identifying it and thinking in the future as to how we're going to meet these in the future, right? But I guess I was just speaking out loud on that. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members? I just want to bring this to the council attention. We started out with the city hall. And Councilmember Alvarez suggested that we do two separate bonds and add different things in it. And Mr. Cagle came back, and he had a chart where it was three items. The bottom line is this, we, the council, need to decide what do we want? The election is May, if, if we decide to move in that direction. And I have to agree with Councilwoman Cobb, there are so many mixed things going out to the public. They could be confused. We don't, do we really know what we want to do? Or do this, is this something we want to postpone? Because we have to decide tonight to give staff some kind of direction. I agree with Councilmember Alvarez, that may be a great avenue. Put the city hall off and pull the things, the fire stations, we definitely need them everywhere. But I do believe in Councilmember Adams, the park and rec side of it, and the library. And I started out, and I'm the kind of person, once I focus on something, and we tell the public, if it's the city hall, it's the city hall. We can't be wishy-washy what we want to do. So we need to decide tonight, what is the top priority with the bond, city hall or two bonds? Council, listen for some kind of discussion before we go into the five designs. Councilmember Boyd?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, myself and Mayor, former Mayor Pro Tim Wilkerson presented this item for the council to have discussion, and it was primarily for the city hall. I have remained a strong advocate for the city hall. I do believe it is a top priority. It will serve the entire city long-term, over time. There are recreation center and library, those might be able to wait. I would say we measure the demand for those to determine if those should be considered right now. I am also a strong advocate for park development, and I would advocate to use some of this funding for our future park development on the west side, which we've always understood has been a need. And so, Councilman Boyd speaking, and representing West Colleen, and being the individual who placed this on the agenda to speak about, my highest recommendation would be to make the city hall a top priority, and find a way to include some park space for the west side. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you. I do second that motion. I think that the city hall obviously is an important, important piece to this for our future growth and development of our city, which we've kind of talked about that considerably. I would like to see or understand a little bit better about how we can potentially expand this bond to be able to generate some commerce as part of this process. So whether that is looking at different ways that we can maximize our efficiency and get a return on our investment, that's really where I'd like to know if there's some other opportunities for us there. I am also in favor, and I do like the idea that Councilmember Adams mentioned regarding combination of the library and rec center. That does make a whole lot of sense as well. But I do agree with the city hall, but identifying how we can create some commerce also under this bond option, if that's a way.
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I apologize. Councilwoman Cobb?
I like the idea also of having a strong, the city hall, and having those persons there. But you know, before, I'm just going to be very common with you all, before old girl go and spend a whole lot of money on some stuff, I want to make sure that our, that we're taking care of some things. I know some of the things that I've asked for is not coming out of a bond, but I want air conditioning, some buildings with people working. I want people being able to sit in the comfort, the chairs if they need to work. I want the joys and the discomforts of this city to be met. But let's meet with people first, and then come on. We can get the municipal building that we always wanted, that this city needs, that our people will come and make a part in. I'm so afraid that we're going to miss out on those folks who are out there screaming that they're needing, that they want some things, and they only see us working in a real nice, comfortable building. That don't look like y'all, I'm sorry. It just doesn't. I don't know what to say or how to do it, but I think we got to take care of all of it at the, at the time. I know, Mr. Cagle, we have some money, right? Like for the, the building that may have to be built for our staff. That's not even in this bond.
Parks maintenance?
Yes, sir.
It'll be on your next agenda.
So that's on the next agenda. So there are some things. I've got to secure that those things are going to be taken. I, I, I'm sorry, love the idea of a municipal building. I could see all these things fixed, but I got to make sure that the people that working and will make that happen have what they need. And I know, we know that it's going to happen. We know it's going to need, but we're not hearing all of that. We're just saying, we're going to build a building, and we're going to put this here, and we're going to put that there. But we never say, if we get this bond and we take care of these things, that, that building. You have to keep reminding people. We have short minds, and especially complainers and persons who want things to happen, that they don't see happening. We have to remember, in order to sell, you have to remember what you got coming. And we're not doing that. It just sounds like we're setting a bond, we're going to, it's going to be 192 billion, 92, 192 million. We have up to that cap. Did I give a too big a number, y'all? But we have some numbers there that we're going to meet to get the other things done. But these will be done by. It seems like we're saying, hey, this, this building is going to be ready by, say, 2016, 2017. I'm just giving them a date. And, but the bond, if we get this, and if we get this kind of money, it's going to be ready this date. You know, I just forgot about what was really important to me in my heart, until you start building on it, and then everyone says, oh, my goodness, that's, can I get a minute?
It's up to the, it's up to the council.
They all smile. That was a yes. So that simply means, I just want, I've got to make sure that's taken care of. People are important to me. This city is important to me. And we're making it convenient, but we also got to remind them, this is what we're doing. There's a difference in getting and doing. You see how we're presenting? We're presenting like this is what we're going to do, but we're not presenting like we are doing right now. There's a difference in the way that we present. I'm sorry. Words count, and the way we present will count for them to vote and to go along with you. The marketing strategy, sometimes got to be a little different.
Thank you. For the residents at home, I want to remind you that the employees that work for the city of Colleen, they're also residents of the city of Colleen. So we're all in this together with taxes. It's just not one person. It's all of us if we go forward with this bond. Councilmember Adams?
I'm going to use a term I used to hate in the military, and that synergy. It works. But I see the, the city hall as being that centerpiece for creating that in the, in the city. And I supported this when it first came. And I suggested adding the parks, the, and the recreation facilities, because we didn't have it, because the idea we also had was making Colleen a place people wanted to come to. But if we had to say one particular thing, it would, for me, it would be the city hall. Let the voters decide whether we want to have the city hall. We can bring back, and I don't, and as we develop parkland, I think we don't just put parkland, we also put parkland with recreation facilities. Because most of our, most successful cities have that. You know, it's great that we have large swaths of green space, and we do need that, but we also need space, because it is hot in Texas. And recreation is a, an important facet of society. It takes the, and it takes the load off of police. When we have places for our youth to go to, they're not just privately owned, not just at the school district, but are those that are provided by the city. So I would, as a priority, I would consider the city hall as the priority. And maybe we come back with a package on how we do the other community and recreational services that the city provides.
Thank you. All council members have spoken three times, except Councilwoman Gonzalez, and also Councilmember Segar. And for clarification, that's not all the employees live in Colleen, but some of the employees live in Colleen. So I would go to Mayor Pro Tim, and then Councilmember Segar.
Thank you. Also, I just want to remind everyone that we also, when we talk about doing this particular bond, one of the things that came up initially was that we didn't even know, like, what the starting point was going to be, what it's going to look like. So in order for us to do a quality assessment, we can't just, I think it would be wrong if we just said, we want it, let's go. In order for us to do our research, to do our due diligence, was really important to make sure that we knew first what our options were, what the long-term cost was going to be, who even needed to be in the building, what type of real estate does that leave us with, what are our options for the real estate. So when we did that needs assessment, now we can project the cost. Now we can move forward and let the citizens decide if this is a viable option for us now, or if it's something that we're going to do in the future. But at the end of the day, I think that everyone will now have a clear understanding. As, as we grow, if we don't grow with our growth, what are we looking at 10 years, 20 years down the line when we are overgrown, and this building is no longer able to support what we have happening? So we can make an informed decision. And to your point, Councilmember Cobb, making sure that we're educating the public efficiently, as far as what that looks like, I think is going to be crucial. But we have to do this as part of the process. We have to have a needs assessment to know, what are we looking at? How is this going to affect us? Can we do it? And do they want to do it? And if the citizens decide, they have options at their fingertips, one way or the other. Thank you.
Yes. Councilmember Alvarez, have you spoken three times? I missed out on that. I'll come back to you. Oh, he ready. Councilmember Segar, I apologize for that.
Thank you, Mayor. And I know we talked about this, but I need a refresher. Mr. Cagle, what is the difference between the GO and the CO bonds?
So general obligation bonds, those are ones that are voted on by the public. So CO bonds don't have to be voted on by the public. And typically, you do those things for more basic items, like all of our water and sewer debt issue, those are COs. The last debt issue that we had were COs for, it was 32 million, and it included the park maintenance facility, the FBO at Skylark, it included fleet maintenance facility, and police storage, and then a small amount of money for park development. And so typically streets, fire stations, things like that, those COs are typically used.
And those are just voted on by the council, right? No vote is required for that from the citizens?
That is correct. The citizens have the opportunity, if they want, if they oppose it, to get a petition to oppose it and call for an election. But no, COs are just voted on by the city council.
Got it, got it. So basically, what we're looking at, as far as putting on the ballot, is just the GO bonds?
Yes, sir.
That we're looking at. Okay. All right. That's all I have.
Councilmember Alvarez?
Thank you, Mayor. My question is, you know, we, we keep hearing these conversations about, you know, we have this building here. It was, although it was not intended or built as a city hall, it was built as a school, and we've kind of made do. So, you know, if the option, and maybe this lends itself back to transparency, is if we were to say, okay, or if the voter said, we don't want a new city hall, and we just want to, the city to rent out everything you have. If we put together a number for the voters to look at in comparison to 150 million dollar city hall, if we were to bring this building back up to code and renovated, the same thing for the municipal court building, same thing for the IT building, same thing for the permits building, the same thing for HR and finance, and all these things, if we were to put together a renovation budget for all those things and look at them side by side, you know, maybe that'll give them more information to either cast or vote one way or another, and say, hey, look, you know, it's $100 million to renovate these existing facilities. We think that's a better deal, or we think, you know, let's say you got the price tag down on city hall to 125 million, we think the additional 25 is worth the extra squeeze, or whatever that number is. But I think it would help, you know, provide that information, and people can look at it and say, because otherwise, it's kind of speculation. Well, yeah, let's just stay in these buildings because it's cheaper. Well, how much cheaper is it? Do we really know? I don't think anybody, well, there may be an engineer in here, or a commercial building developer or builder could tell us what that number is. So just thinking out loud and being able to provide more information, so voters can truly make an informed decision.
Councilmember Alvarez, for clarification, do we put all, we go and have our staff to go out and estimate or do study or engineer, to go out and see how much is the cost for each individual building that you spoke about, and then we put that on our website compared to these buildings, if we do them individual, and the city hall by itself? Clarification.
Well, in my mind, I don't think it needs to be something too drawn out and formal, but you know, if we can say, okay, this, these, the city staff knows the faci- but, you know, if we can say, okay, this, these, the city staff knows, the facility managers know what these facilities need. So if we can put, compile a list together and say, okay, well, this is the industry average for 1,600 linear feet of HVAC ducting, this round about what it's gonna cost, same thing for flooring, paint, whatever the other, the roofing, whatever it needs, I think it's pretty easy to look up what industry standards are, cost per square foot, linear foot, and say, okay, well, this is the things that all these buildings need to bring them up to code, and identify any other things in there, you know? Building code standards is, was 150 square foot per person? Do we currently meet that on all the staff that we have in these buildings? Do we have 150 square feet per person? You know, these are all good things to know, for the public to know, you know, what these current conditions look like, and what it is that they're signing off on if they say, no, we don't want a new city hall for these employees.
Thank you. Mr. Kegel.
I can, yeah, we can do some work on that. It may not be great, but I can give you one example that we have from experience. It's the Rosa Herford Center, and I think at the end of the day, we're gonna find out the costs are about the same of renovating or demoing and building new.
Yes, sir. But, Mr. Kegel, before you move forward with that, it has to be a consensus for the council. They have to agree that this is something that they wanna do. So if this is something the council would like to have staff do, give me a show of hand.
What?
To, what Mr. Alvarez just said, break down everything in detail. Because my whole concept is, we'll focus on the city hall, that's what we putting on the ballot, this is what we should vote on. But I wanna respect what Councilmember Alvarez just said. Do we want staff to go and break down the buildings and find out how much it costs to renovate it, the paint, the this and that, and this and that? Or do we wanna put all our energy on the bond and focus on city hall?
Mayor, if I can.
Yes, clarify.
I'm not saying to not move forward with the city hall initiative, as we said. But between now and May 2025, if we could gather this information, you know, like I said, not saying go out and hire a consultant, just put together some rough numbers.
Staff will do it.
You know, this is what we believe that these buildings need, these are the current conditions. And so before May 2025, when the voters go to the ballot box, the information is made accessible to them, and they can say, okay, well, we didn't know this information prior to, so maybe it helps them make a decision one way or another.
Yes, sir. I did understand what you said the first time, but being a May election, and I hope it get better, it may not, we only have four to five, six thousand people to come out and vote, but is it worth the time, the staff to do all of this, put it out there? And from what I'm looking at now, and what people are saying, they don't engage. Maybe this will be a turning point that they might engage. I'm not telling the council, that's just more work for the staff, but it's up to the council. So if everybody agree with what, or don't agree with, we're just gonna do, because everybody have spoken their time, we're just gonna do just a consensus. The staff will go, come up with all the information that Councilmember Alvarez stated between now and the election in May. Councilmember Adams?
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing.
Yes, or no?
Yeah, I'm all for it.
Councilmember Boyd?
No.
Councilmember Segar?
I need more clarification again, one more time, because I don't know, I didn't understand.
So basically, the buildings like HR, the library, code enforcement building, the building permits, any other building that is, we're gonna put all those individuals into the new city hall to go out and see how much it costs if you had to renovate, how much the paint costs, how much if they need a new roof, how much the flooring will cost if they need that, to go through each one between now and 2025, so the voters will make a decision if they wanna do the bond.
So we're trying to do a comparison between renovation and building new. I think that's a good idea. That's kinda what I mentioned earlier.
Permission to speak.
About that updates on all these old buildings.
Uh, Mayor Protem.
Yes, I am in support of this. Mr. Kegel, madam, I do believe Mr. Kegel had started working on the city hall comparison at some point, sometime back, so we might already...
On all of those buildings?
No, just on the city hall we'd started, so I am in favor of this. Thank you.
Yeah, it's the city hall, but we're talking about all the rest of it.
Yes, ma'am, I'm in favor. Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Yes, sir, I'll come right back. Councilwoman Cobb?
Yes, but don't reinvent the wheel. Use the same data that you used to get that, you can use it to prove...
Do all the other buildings.
Yeah.
So we got a consensus. Everybody use their time on this. Except Councilmember Boyd, you were the odd man out. You say, sir?
Sure. This is my comment.
Odd man out was not the best way to say it.
This is fine. Most of this work was partly accomplished by the architect, if I'm not mistaken already. Renovations and a side-by-side comparison is fine. However, we know the overwhelming need is for space in the future. If we're just having factors of cost for renovations versus new build, we're not really meeting the need for the space. We know additional space is gonna cost additional money, so we'd have to have a measurement for that, too. It sounds like it's baked in where they would determine based on square footage that should be allotted, that it will be figured out there, but I do think that we should rely with what the architect's already done and given us that answer. That's just what I meant.
Well, Mr. Kegel, the council, the majority, wants you to do it again. And I agree with Councilmember Boyd, and they may have forgotten that, all those things have already been taken into consideration. However, we go with the majority. Mr. Kegel, can we have the designs to come up?
Do you want the first presentation that had the different options?
Yes, sir.
Yes, could we bring that one up?
So we'll look at the designs with the different options, and I will read what Councilmember Solomon sent in through email with his input on the designs, and then the council, we don't have to make a decision tonight. I talked to Mr. Kegel, it's not a decision tonight, but you take under this kind of consideration, especially with the, if you wanna have several options of bonds, or you just wanna focus on city hall, that's, you need to take some time to really think what this council wanna do moving forward. And when will we come back and discuss this again, Mr. Kegel? What's our deadline with us making the final decision, what we wanna put on the ballot?
Well, the final decision to call the election, I believe, is about January, February, but you need a decision before that in order to have time to adequately inform the public on whatever the proposals are. So I would think you need to make this decision, maybe your second meeting in September.
Okay. Councilmember Boyd, this is about the timeline?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And council, you can ask questions about the timeline for clarification.
It sounds to me like we still have not absolutely determined by vote that we want to place the city hall on the agenda.
Mm-hmm. That is correct.
Okay, and I believe we need to go ahead and accelerate that process so that that's communicated and given us the motivation, and everyone in the community understanding that we're moving forward with this. So with that said, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion of direction to place the city hall on the 2025 ballot for bond election as a top priority.
Councilmember Adams?
I'll second.
All in favor of the motion? Oh, before we do that, let me read what Councilmember Segar, I mean, Solomon gave out of fairness. Reflecting on my visit with several city council members and city staff last year to three municipal city halls in North Texas, here are the features I envisioned for the new Colleen City Hall. Welcoming design and modern inviting architectural style that reflects the community character. Community space, areas for public meetings, events, and gathering to foster community engagement. Sustainable practices, eco-friendly material, and energy-efficient systems to promote sustainability. Technology integration, smart technology for efficient service, such as a digital information kiosk and online service stations. Accessibility, facilities that are fully accessible, including those with disability, to ensure inclusiveness. Landscape areas, green space, gardens, or parks around the building for relaxation and community events. Public arts, celebrate Colleen culture and history. Flexible workspace, modern office layouts that encourage collaboration among city staff, improve efficiency. Secure area, adequate security measures to protect sensitive information and ensure safety for visitors and staff. Sufficient parking, ample parking space to accommodate visitors and employees. All in favor of the motion of direction? Yes, all opposed? All in favor? Yes, all opposed? No? The motion of direction carries five to one. Okay, I get a motion to adjourn. But do y'all wanna still go through the slide? Because y'all, okay, thanks, so if y'all made that motion of direction, I didn't get to see it again. Councilmember Boyd?
We're preparing, we're preparing.
A motion to adjourn?
No.
Oh, are we going through the slides? That's what I asked. I'm sorry.
Let me make sure I'm clear here. So the intention of the vote was to ensure that we were able to move on with this discussion, right, as a priority for the city. I'm expecting the presentation is where we go in, we delve through this to determine.
The motion of direction that you gave, that this will be on May 25, the city hall will be on there on the ballot.
Yes.
Now, this right here is just going into what design, it's five of them out there, we just gonna put the options that we have, that one slide, and we're gonna continue to discuss. Then, by September, this council need to decide it, what design you going with.
Understood. I'm clear.
Right.
I'm in agreement with that.
Now, taking under consideration, there could be another motion of direction to add another item on the ballot for May. So it's, that's not out of wonder, but we do know the city hall will be on the 2025 ballot from this motion of direction. Councilmember Segar?
Well, I think you clarified it. My thing was that I don't think we were there yet to put it on the ballot. I think there's a lot of discussion that still has to happen, and hopefully we'll continue that, because I think there's still a lot of unanswered questions that we have before we actually put it on the ballot, but I understand why it was done, so just wanna clarify that.
Yes, sir. So it will be on the ballot, but also, this is between now and September, that's when we clarify what we wanna do, what type, what size, we gonna have the library, HR in there, or we're not gonna have it in the city hall. This is what we're doing now. And, yes, sir. And Mr. Kegel wanted to just show you that slide so y'all can see the options. And please, take advantage of staff. Take advantage. If we have any questions about what you wanna see, we can come back together a month from now, bring all our ideas together, just like Councilmember Solomon, this is what he wants, and we can come together and work together and really give, the council can come to, we're not gonna all agree, that's just, that's established, we're not, but we can give the staff some kind of direction on, this is how much it's gonna cost, this is where we're going. Mr. Kegel, that one slide, so everyone can see.
Excuse me. This is a pretty long presentation, so what I thought I might do is go start with this one, and list all of the departments that were the basis of this study to show what was going in city hall.
So that is all the departments, he's gonna go and find out how much the paint will cost, all the renovation costs that we voted on, that motion of direction. Those are the ones that his staff gonna work on between now and May 25, 2025. Yes, sir, Mr. Councilmember Boyd? That's what you all voted on, what Councilmember Alvarez asked for, so those are them. Yes, sir.
This right here is wonderful. You're meeting all the needs for the departments for the city, and the city serves the citizens. You've got your court in there, planning, IT, human resources, communications, finance, council, manager's office, attorney, secretary, auditor, engineering, building inspection, code enforcement, community development, some of the most frequented departments in one location. This should be highlighted, and I'm comfortable with this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And one of the residents had asked a question, would they have access to the city manager? Would the public have availability for that? Would the council have offices within the building? So those things we don't know, because we have to decide on which direction that we're going. I just wanted to, that was in the citizen comments. So, Mr. Kegel?
Well, I think that question can be answered. Our private office is open for the public to come sit down and use on a whim. I don't know of a place in the world where that occurs.
Yes, sir, I want to say and answer that question.
Well, no, I just thought I'd go ahead and get it out there.
I was just talking about the slide, but that is a good point. All right, council, you have, you see the slide, this is what will be going into the new city hall that was motion of direction to place it on the May 2025. Any other questions, concerns? Mr. Kegel will come back with the other motion of direction given by Councilmember Alvarez, which is the majority voted on it, the cost comparison between what you see in front of you and building of the new city hall. And it's just to educate the residents so they can have that comparison when they make their decision. If there's not anything else, can I get a motion of direction to adjourn? Councilmember Adams?
I think we had brought up today as well, I think, I don't know if we're gonna be deciding this now or later, and I know it was discussed when the contractor brought back, the architect brought back, and that was about the garages and everything else. When will we be discussing that as we go forward? Because that is a major piece in the total cost as well.
Right. As we move forward, that's one reason, right now, we have not even decided what we want. And that was that we discussed the tax, the debts, what we have out there. Some people already discussed, some of them on a garage, some of them don't. So when we come back in our next meeting on this, that I would hope the council will want on the agenda, which would be September, is we should come back and, because Councilmember Solomon's not here, and I really, this is a joint effort with all of us, and we need to do this together. So really going in detail tonight, this was an overview and get public comments. Then you have time to really reach out to the staff and really let them explain and break down, so we won't, we'll have a good understanding, and when we do come back, we're ready to make a decision on how we want that city hall designed. Because tonight, we did a lot of discussion, and that's what we just did.
Yeah, and I agree with the way I, okay, just to make sure we just chart it out, so we know what to, make sure we're prepared for, and with that, if it's no one else have anything, I move to adjourn.
Councilmember Boyd?
Second.
And before I call for the vote, please reach out to your constituents. Have town hall meetings, send out emails, put them on Facebook, and get their input on how they wanna see this, the city hall downtown develop. All in favor? Just raise your hand. Meeting adjourned.